Good evening. I'm going to call to order the September 23rd, 2024 School Committee Meeting. This meeting is being held in person and/or remotely as an alternate means of public access pursuant to Chapter 2 of the Acts of 2023 and all other applicable laws temporarily amending certain provisions of the open meeting law. You are hereby advised that this meeting and all communications during this meeting may be recorded by the Town of Hingham in accordance with the open meeting law. If any participant wishes to record this meeting, please notify the chair at the start of the meeting in accordance with Mass General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 20F, so that the chair may inform all other participants of said recording. We have Harvard Media recording this evening, as well as we are recording on Zoom for purposes of the minutes. Is there anybody else recording in the audience or online? No. Okay. So we're going to move over to item number two. It's the approval of the minutes, and we have one set of minutes to approve tonight. Minutes of September 9th, 2024. Does anyone want to make a motion?
I will make a motion to approve the minutes from September 9th, 2024.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Okay. Item three, questions and comments. This is the part of the meeting where we have set aside 15 minutes to take questions and comments for items that are not on tonight's agenda. Our practice is to take questions and comments during new business items that are on the agenda. If there's something that's not on the agenda and you would like to discuss, if you can raise your hand. Seeing nothing, so we're moving on. All right. Item four, Superintendent's Report. Katie?
Well, thank you, Ness. So this past Thursday marked my 30-day mark on the job, so I've officially completed my first month in the role of acting superintendent, and I continue to be grateful for all of the support of the committee, the community, and our staff and students as we are working together to create inclusive spaces where every student can flourish and thrive. I shared with you in the Superintendent's Report some information about the new superintendent induction program. Many of you are familiar with that program. So this past week, the cohort of new superintendents for the 24-25 year met to share best practices and discuss entry plans. So there are currently 21 new superintendents across the state of Massachusetts, including Sarah Shannon from Cohasset, who was actually my mentee many moons ago. She started at the middle school, and so I'm grateful to have her as a peer in this program. My formal mentor is Bella Wong, who was previously the superintendent of Lincoln Sudbury. Fun fact about Bella is that she followed a very similar trajectory as I have. She began her career as a science teacher, worked for over a decade in her district as an educator, and then worked for another decade as a superintendent, and so she's been a terrific partner as I have been onboarding. She would like to come and meet the committee at some point in October, and then will be out and about with me at schools as I'm doing my walkthroughs in buildings. So I'm grateful for Bella's support. We've been sharing regular updates related to Portrait of a Graduate and Vision of a Learner. So last week was our first session with the leadership team and the TLA consultants, and this week there are a number of opportunities for the community, staff, and students to meet with the TLA consultants to begin to inform the Portrait of a Graduate. And so this week, we will have four or five different listening sessions and focus groups, and then on Friday, we'll be sharing out with the community, with staff, and with students additional digital survey for giving input on the Portrait of a Graduate. And I've had a lot of reach out of interest from community members interested in serving on the Portrait of a Graduate Committee. So we have had almost 30 people volunteer to serve on that steering committee, which is, I thought, a really terrific response. So grateful for that interest in the program. This evening, Erica Pollard, who is entering her third week on the job, is going to share with you the 24-25 Professional Development Catalog. So included in your packet this evening, we have the full catalog, and Erica was just going to share just a quick overview of the key themes of our PD catalog.
Do you care if I do it from here or if I go over there?
Nope. This is great. Yep.
All right. I know that Katie presented the Professional Development Plan to everybody in the spring, so in the interest of not reinventing the wheel, I'm going to give you a couple of updates and changes since you last heard from her in May. Will it work? No, it's not doing anything. Is it on? Yeah, it is on.
All right, Carrie, come forward.
All right, sorry. Anyway, as you all will remember, the Professional Development Plan has four spokes to it: high-quality and universally-designed curriculum and instruction, inclusive and culturally-responsive practices, safe and supportive school environment, and mentoring and leadership development. And as we developed the Professional Development Catalog, we tried to highlight and connect as much as possible to those spokes of our Professional Development Plan. The Professional Development Catalog was shared with all faculty and staff on Friday. It is a living document, so as opportunities arise, we will make edits to this document. But it gives a pretty good overview of what professional development opportunities are going to be available for this coming year. I learned how to use S-MOR and sent out a very fancy newsletter to let people know about some of those offerings, which include, of course, our professional development that's led by our curriculum coordinators and directors, as well as independent book studies that are, you know, a little bit more focused on individual topics, and the memberships that teachers can take advantage of, such as our membership with Primary Source and with the Mass Partnership for Youth. So we kicked off our Professional Development Year with visits from Jessica Minahan about her book, The Behavior Code. She was at the secondary schools on the 18th and will visit the elementary schools on the 10th. And the elementary schools had their first session of Professional Development around PBIS, so it seems like everything got off to a really good start. Something that we added to the catalog this year is a pretty robust set of early-release offerings for our paraprofessionals. Those are going to be facilitated by Athena Educational Consulting. They have come up with some really great workshops for our paraprofessionals that I think are really going to help them to, you know, do the job to the best of their ability. We've also added this year more robust PD for our pre-K teachers, which will be partnering with TLA, again, the same group that we're working with for Portrait of a Graduate. They're going to be doing some needs assessment and helping our pre-K teachers to develop inquiry-based and standards-aligned curriculum for pre-K. Connecting back to the Portrait of a Graduate, we're excited to offer our first graduate-credit-equivalent course. I thought this was a really interesting part of the new offerings for teachers. So we tied this in with the Vision of a Graduate, Portrait of a Graduate, and we will have five in-person meetings of one hour with independent work to be completed in between sessions. An email went out on Friday with some information about that, and we've actually already gotten a good number of responses for people that want to be involved in this course. So I think it's a really nice way for us to tie together our Professional Development offerings and our work on Portrait of a Graduate.
Erica has accomplished much in her three weeks on the job, so thank you for that, Erica. And again, the graduate-credit-equivalent, I just wanted to explain that phrase a bit. So in our newly ratified contract, a graduate-credit-equivalent is a course that the district will offer for free to educators. Educators will be able to use those credits for advancement on the salary scale, and it's a great way for us to leverage some of the internal capacity that we have to offer courses, again, as Erica said, that will more specifically dovetail with initiatives that we have. So I'm thrilled to have this first offering. In my report, I also just shared a little bit of an update, a deeper dive into Jessica Minahan. I'm a bit of a Jessica Minahan groupie. I think she's terrific, and every time I see her present, I've seen her present a half dozen times, I pick up a new phrase or a new best practice from her. One of the metaphors that she shared that will really stick out to me is when she walks into a classroom, she said she sees soda cans. I said, "Where is she going with this?" And she explained that when we see our students and even our staff and fellow adults, you never know what might have shaken that child or staff member before you see them. So everyone, you know, looks regulated when you look out, but you don't know what they might have experienced either in the distant past or the recent past that might be impacting their behavior. So that was one image that would really stick with me. Wanted to share, just to highlight, we've had so many terrific enrichment offerings, but really did want to highlight the One Book, One School offering at the middle school this year. Wish in the Dark is one of my personal favorites of the books that we've read. Christina Suntornnevar is really just a rock star. She has three Newberry Honor medals and has received medals for both fiction and nonfiction. So we read one of her fiction offerings, but her presentation was very well-received, and she was very generous with her time and really connected with middle-school-aged learners, which is not every presenter does, and so was very engaged with the students, did a book signing in the cafeteria. So just wanted to give a shout-out to the One Book, One School Committee and also to the Middle School PTO for organizing that really rich offering for our students. Erica, do you want to take the multilingual learner potluck party?
Yeah. So last year, we hosted a few events, the ESL teachers and I, for our multilingual families. We wanted to give them an opportunity to connect to each other and to the Hingham community. So we are having our first event of the year this Wednesday night at the middle school at 5:30. It's going to be a potluck dinner, and we would love any interested families to join us.
That's amazing. Thank you for putting that on.
Great. Thank you for organizing that. And then just the last item I wanted to share that I included in your packet. I did include some preliminary enrollment data. I know that we usually do not share that until October, but given that we have our Saturday meeting before I would be presenting the enrollment October 1st data, I know that this will probably be part of our Saturday conversation, and so just included some preliminary observations about enrollment, but know that we'll take our usual deep dive in October and kind of unpack some of the enrollment trends that we're seeing.
Great. Thank you. Does anybody have any questions? Okay. Thank you so much. Oh, yep.
Jaclyn Boprey, President of the Hingham Education Association. I just wanted to echo that Jessica Minahan, is that was her name? It was a really good PD session. It really felt like we were learning from a fellow educator, and like when she was talking about her experience in the classroom, it directly like hit. We knew exactly what she was talking about, and it was great to hear successful strategies validated with language from like the BCBA community, like why what we knew was successful was successful. And then a couple opportunities to also reflect on like how we could intervene, especially with students with anxiety. We're seeing it more and more. So it was a really, really great PD. I'm looking forward. We have a second part, right? Yeah. Yeah. So I'm looking forward to that.
Yes. So thank you, Jaclyn, for that feedback. And again, Jessica Minahan will work with our elementary educators twice and our secondary educators twice, twice. So she was really able to tailor her presentation to what we're seeing at each level. As we've mentioned before, at the elementary level, we see a lot of externalizing behaviors. At the secondary level, we see more internalizing behaviors, and she really was able to target her presentation to what we're seeing at each grade level, so.
I'll also add that I got a great suggestion from a teacher after watching that presentation that we should do, add to our PD catalog a book study of Jessica Minahan's book so that people can dig a little bit deeper. I thought it was an amazing suggestion. Thank you. And we're going to put that together.
Oh, great. Thanks, Erica. Thank you. Okay. Nope, go ahead. Yeah.
One, Foster. Are we not getting an update today?
So unfortunately, we will not be able to share that update until our next October meeting. So I know that we are raring to go. We have made some great progress. I think that the plan that we have discussed is substantially complete, but I didn't want to be premature and bring that forth tonight, so thank you.
Thank you. Sorry. And then enrollment is down, which I think we expected. And we'll talk about this more, I guess, but is the transition year, sixth, seventh, eighth, is that consistent? So we've lost about 20 or so per year from, in each grade. Do you know? Is that normal? Like, I think it is, but I've lost track of what.
Yeah, we can discuss more at our October meeting. One trend that has shifted over time is where we generally in the past would see the enrollment drop is the eight to nine.
Yep.
Now that more private schools have middle schools, we are seeing more in that six to seven, and so that six to seven drop is certainly higher than we would like to see, but that is part of the shift of more families enrolling at that middle school, seventh grade.
And seven to eight probably is also, it seems like an odd, I don't mean to.
It's fluctuated.
Yeah. Yeah, that has, that has fluctuated over the years, for sure. Yeah. And I'll be happy to at our, both our September meeting and our October meeting, we can unpack that more.
Okay. Thank you.
Anything else? Nope. Okay. All right. So moving over to item five, 5.1, communications received by the superintendent. I think you did have something.
Yes. So we had one item this evening, and I'm glad that Derek Smith is here. So Dr. Cataldo received a notification from Special Olympics of Massachusetts congratulating the middle school on reaching Unified Champion School status for the 23-24 school year. The letter reads that your school community has successfully accomplished this by implementing unified sports, inclusive youth leadership opportunities, and whole-school engagement. So again, very grateful to the staff at Hingham Middle School for expanding our unified offerings, which have, as we know, have been incredibly successful and popular at the high school, and the fact that we're now able to bridge that down to the middle school was recognized by Special Olympics. Thank you for that, Derek.
Congratulations.
And then the only other communication that I received was actually from our Veterans Affairs Office. They just wanted to bring to the committee's attention a recent act called an Act Honoring, Empowering, and Recognizing Service Members and Veterans. It's also known as the Heroes Act. The Veterans Affairs Office did highlight for us some phrasing that has particular impact on schools. The language is largely consistent with our policies and our current procedures, but we're the Veterans Affairs Office. Forwarded this, just wanted to share that with the committee.
Right. Thank you. Okay. 5.2, student communications later. Didn't know if it was Tuesday.
The school year doesn't really start until the Friday show starts running, so not many communications here. Yeah.
Congratulations on your senior year. I know you're, it's going to be a busy one. All right. 5.3, other communications. Anybody on the committee have anything? All right. So moving over to item six, unfinished business. We have one item. 6.1, to discuss memorandum of understanding with the Hingham Maritime Center. It's our second read and to act as appropriate. And I will bring, kick this over to Carrie.
Yes, this is the second read, and it is basically memorializing an arrangement we already have with the Hingham Maritime Center to store their boats and rowing equipment at the facility at 19 Fort Hill Street. So it only covers the storage of equipment. The rest of the collaboration we do with them is covered, or the access to the harbor is covered by a different document. If anyone has any questions? And they've already approved it, so.
Okay. Great. So it'll be ineffective.
Yeah.
Effective once we approve it.
Yeah, once we approve it.
Okay. Does anybody have any questions?
I will make a motion to approve the memorandum of understanding between the Hingham Maritime Center and the Hingham Public Schools.
Hold on a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Okay. All right. So that was all for our unfinished business. Now we go to new business. 7.1, to discuss a varsity crew trip to Glastonbury, Connecticut for competitions and act as appropriate. I'm not sure who's taking these on.
I think Patrick.
Patrick. Okay. So we have Patrick on line. Hi, Patrick.
Hey, guys. Can you hear me? Sorry.
Yes. How are you?
Good. How are you?
Good, thanks.
Yeah. So the high school, I'm the program director for the rowing team. We have 110 athletes on our team, and we are racing, hoping to race this weekend in Glastonbury, Connecticut at the race called the Guardian Chase. It's a bunch of teams that are Connecticut-based teams and some Massachusetts teams that are all in our New England Championship League. And we plan on bringing our, all our varsity rowers and our newest novice rowers who have just learned how to row the past few weeks. So it should hopefully load with good weather and good conditions, and we're hoping for a great race.
Great. Does anybody have any questions? No? All right. Somebody want to make a motion?
Sure. I will make a motion to approve the varsity crew trip to Glastonbury, Connecticut for competitions on September 28th, 2024.
Hold on a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Okay. All right. Thank you.
Good luck.
Good luck. Good luck. 7.2, to discuss a proposed Model UN trip to Boston and act as appropriate. Who's taking this one? Is it Erica? No.
So the shepherd for this trip, the organizer, Catherine Black, she wasn't able to be here tonight, but she did fill me in on all the details of the trip and also mention that this is one that they have done every year for, I can't even tell you how many years. They have a really great system in place, so they'll go to the Harvard Model UN Conference in Boston, and it involves two overnight stays, I believe, two nights overnight in a hotel near Harvard, and the kids get to participate in Model UN committee meetings at Harvard. It's a great experience. Hopefully, but they can go again.
Anyone have any questions?
I will make a motion to approve the proposed Model UN trip to Boston for the dates of January 30th to February 2nd, 2025.
Hold on a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? No. Okay. Thank you. 7.3, another trip. Yeah, this is the trip night. We've got to discuss a trip to California for orchestra and band students and act as appropriate.
Bryanson caught it on the call.
Oh, hi, Brian.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes. Can you hear us?
Sure. I can just fine. Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay. So this will be our, our second trip to LA with the same company, Grand Classroom. We last traveled in 2020, got back on March 1st, 2020, just before everything shut down. And following a very similar itinerary, we're planning to see a tribute program with LHL Harmonica, an all-row program of Honorable Bach, go to the Grand Museum, the LHL Museum of Art, some behind-the-scenes tours of Warner Brothers, along with other sort of traditional Hollywood types, the type thing, the Griffith Observatory, the Hollywood Sign, all that good stuff.
Amazing. Very cool. Yep. Any questions? No?
Give you a pair of glasses to read a number.
Want to make a motion?
Yes. I will make a motion to approve the trip.
Very fast question.
Yes, of course.
I've just, I've never noticed this before, but it says, just at the very top, there's no sophomores going on field trips in the month of March. Is that?
That's due to MCAS.
Okay. So this is excluding nine to 12, but no sophomores. Okay. Cool. Thank you. Sorry.
I will make a motion to approve the trip to California for orchestra and band students for the dates of March 19th to 23rd, 2025.
Erica? Any further discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Okay. All right. So continuing with the theme, we've got 7.4, to discuss the annual grade eight trip to Washington, DC in May and act as appropriate. I will be very excited about this one.
Good evening. Thanks so much for having me. Yes, this is our annual DC trip, and we're excited to be able to put it forward for eighth graders again this year. We are planning, hoping to travel May 7th, 8th, and 9th. The students will travel by air, as they have for the past couple of years, which greatly cuts down on the amount of travel time and increases the amount of time where the, on the ground and able to see the sights and experience their nation's capital firsthand. This trip is open to every student who is interested in participating, and we do make sure that if there's a financial constraint for any families that we do what we can to help defray the cost to whatever degree need be so that all students can take advantage of this great opportunity. We partner with Grand Classroom, as we've done for many years now with this trip, and look forward to hopefully traveling again this May.
Any questions?
Just saying, as much as it pains me that the Gettysburg trip is cut out.
I know. I know, Tim. I'll put in a plug for you with Ms. McCullough.
But I also want to appreciate the fact that there's, there has been genuine educational opportunities for the kids who don't go on the trip.
Absolutely.
It's not, you know, they're not in a study hall for a week.
Absolutely.
It's really good opportunities for kids who do stay back.
It really is a credit to the hard work of the teachers who put together the trip for the kids who go to DC and those who do not travel for various reasons, and that they learn about their, their local history, and it is all connected to the eighth-grade curriculum in a meaningful way. So I do appreciate you acknowledging that. I think it's an important part of the program that it is not, it does not exclude anyone. So if you should choose not to travel for whatever reason, we make it worth your while to come to school for those three days.
And I hope it is not in the high 90s in May this year.
I certainly hope not also. But we'll, we'll just hear about it from here.
Yes. That's true.
I will make a motion. Oh, I'm sorry. Yes. Diane Denaply, if you can state your name and address.
Hi, Diane Denaply, 16 Gardner Street. I'm just here as a mom tonight. I just had a question. My son last year was in the CLC and would have been part of the group going to DC, and it took some massaging between Mr. Smith and Dr. Cataldo and I to really come up with what to do with a child who may not do very well, be out of routine for three days. And so just while we're in the planning phases, I would just ask that Dr. Cataldo or Ayesha will do, put some thought into what may be appropriate planning for children who don't necessarily do very well, be out of their routine for multiple days. Thank you.
Good suggestion. Thank you.
Okay. I gotta make sure I keep looking for the answer. Okay. Okay. All right. Yep.
I will make a motion to approve the trip to Washington, DC for grade eight for the time of May 7th through 9th, 2025.
I will second. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? No. Okay. All right.
Thank you all.
Thank you, Derek. 7.5, to discuss the FY, what year? FY '26 or '25, sorry. Budget calendar and act as appropriate.
26. 26. Yeah.
Okay. I'm sorry. Yes. FY '26. Yes, you're right. I know. You're right. It's just so far out. Okay. To discuss the calendar and act as appropriate. Ayesha, is this one you?
Yes. This is just our calendar for the year again. I think some of the, we tried this year to try to use the budget, instead of having multiple budget meetings, to just use the school committee time to host those meetings. So hopefully, it wouldn't be as, it would be more compact rather than being as drawn out. And it kind of, it more or less follows the same, the same format that we did as last year, but just wanted to keep you informed on, on that process. We'll get started on that as early as this week, so.
It doesn't end.
Yeah. And I'll just, if I can comment, I spoke with both Katie and Ayesha about, because we had had a brief discussion on possibly going back to the old way we did it on the two, two nights a week, but I think the compromise kind of was just that we would keep those Monday night meetings agendas a little bit lighter than we typically have, and so it would give us more opportunity to kind of dig in if we had questions. So it would be, so it's a long night.
Yep. Sorry. Thank you to both of you for that. Thank you. Any comments, questions, Carrie?
Yeah. Just one thing. I was looking at how the school councils are part of this, just the way it's worded. In December, principals share preliminary budget discussions with the school council, and then then they inform the school council about the budget. Just, I want to make sure that we do get input from these councils on the building-based budget so that they're included in the process.
Good suggestion. Yeah. Thank you. Or good reminder. Okay. Any other questions?
Is this, is this, is this supposed, is it meant to say school council or school committee?
School council, that's wrong. Yeah.
Yeah, each school council.
We don't have photo, naturally. It's just.
This is more information now.
Just one question. Just the dates.
Okay. All right. Any more? Okay. So 7.6, to discuss the daily. Um, okay, so seven point six, to discuss the daily substitute rate for teachers and act as appropriate.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Yeah. So this is just an increase in the, the rate, the substitute rate for teachers, for people who were substituted for teachers. With the increase in the power rate, we found that in some cases, the, the teacher, substitute teacher rate was probably less than the power rate. So we wanted to make sure that we balanced out those expenses and made it, make it, made it more interesting, more interesting, made it more acceptable for people to actually want to substitute. So that's kind of the reason behind it. With also the new contract, normally we, for short, the short-term substitute rate, we normally use the V1 rate, but the contract has changed this year. So we wanted to update that rate as well, too. So that reflects that update in the contract as well.
What was the full day? What was the old rate?
For the, the old rate for the, the daily was 125.
Okay.
And for the, the, was three or six, I think, 23? Yeah.
Okay.
Are the new rates competitive with area towns? I know we're sort of in competition for subs.
Right. Typically, we have been. So I think by bumping it up again, it will also keep us competitive. And I think even our, our power rate right now is very competitive above most in the area as well.
Okay.
So then that kind of pushes us up as well, too.
Yep. Any other questions? No? Want to make a motion?
I will make a motion to approve the substitute teacher rate for half-day and full-day.
Hold on a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, aye. Any opposed? Okay. All right, seven point seven, to discuss end of year FY '24 budget and act as appropriate. It was '24, not '25. Ayesha.
Right. So as part of the, this is just kind of like the close-up of, of this past year. And just to have you vote on the, the return of the $2,000, almost $3,000 to the town, which is less than, point, point, is best, is very, very small amount considering that our budget is like over $16 million right now. And also to, to also approve the, the ups and downs of the lines in terms of the increases and decreases in the lines as well from the original budget line. So if you could please approve those, that would be helpful as well.
Okay. Any questions?
Well, the approval would, because it's only FY '24. It wouldn't be the FY '25 lines, correct?
No. So just be compared to those lines that are above budget, just to, just, just as an entirety where those lines are above budget, just to approve those as well, all below budget.
And can you remind me, is this the last year that we have SRA funds? We've now used all the SRA, correct?
Maybe, yes. We use all the SRA.
Because I, I remember there was a, there was an issue where it looked like we sent back some money.
Yep.
But then when the town was reporting it, it looked like our turnback was significantly larger. So we're not going to be in that issue again this year.
No.
Twenty-three was a little less.
That was, yeah.
FY '23 was a little.
FY '23, okay. So, yeah, all right. So, okay. So we've got.
Yeah, and $2,700 is a miniscule.
Yeah.
In contact, so.
And this, I, we were supposed to do this at the subcommittee meeting, and I forgot. So this was on me.
Was that, sorry?
We were, we, we did review all of this in our subcommittee meeting when we were full participation of the school committee. I forgot to do the motion. So doing it here tonight. So with that, I will make a motion to approve the return of $2,773 to the town of Hingham for the FY 2024 year.
Hold on a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, aye. Any opposed? Okay, thank you very much. Okay, so seven point eight, to discuss a proposed timeline for the search of Executive Director of Student Services and act as appropriate. Are you taking this? Okay.
Yes, thank you. So I worked with our HR Director, Mary Ann Foley, to develop a proposed timeline for the Executive Director of Student Services. So we've been very grateful to have Dr. Barbara Cataldo serving his interim both last year and this year. But we are eager to post for a full-time, permanent executive director. And so we do plan to have our recruiting materials prepared. Again, we had recruiting materials prepared last year that we can simply refresh, and those should be ready to go in December. And our plan was to advertise right after the, the winter break, and so we'd be posting around the first of January. We had debated perhaps posting before the holiday break, but felt that it might get kind of lost in, in the holiday rush. And so we felt that January 1st would be our, our best bet for advertising. And we do hope to have finalists appointed no later than April 1st to allow some time for overlap with Dr. Cataldo and some time for onboarding, so.
Thank you. Any questions? Okay. All right. Thank you very much. Okay, seven point nine, to approve grants and donations and act as appropriate. I don't believe we have any, but we do have seven point ten.
Yes.
To approve surplus and act as appropriate.
Yes.
Okay, so seven point ten.
Yep. In terms of the surplus amount, we have two vans. Thankfully, we will, we've been in a position this year to actually decommission those two vans. One of them has already started rusting, and the seats in both are like dilapidated, basically completely destroyed. And there, if you can see the mileage on it, it's very high for those vehicles as well. And speaking to the, the Director of Transportation, it's, thinking about the safety of the kids, it would be best to make sure that we decommission those vehicles so that we don't have them breaking down on us or anything going wrong at the time. Considering, because these vehicles are, are 10 years or over, and sometimes those vehicles travel very far to carry our special ed, special education students back and forth to school most times. So we want to make sure that they're working very well and they're in proper order as well in terms of going the distance. So they're not vehicles that, you know, like your, like my car may be over 100,000 miles, but it might be fine for me to drive it. But with the kids on there, we want to make sure that it's appropriate as well. Okay? So I ask that you could please approve those.
These are at 205 miles.
Yes.
Sell it to a TikToker, they make a studio apartment out of it.
Yes.
Do I need to read off the VIN numbers?
Please.
Motion. Do I?
No, I don't, I think.
Okay. Okay. All right. I will make a motion to declare a surplus. The, listed in the memo, and to authorize the Executive Director of Business and Sports Services to dispose of them at the least cost to Hingham.
Hold on a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, aye. Any opposed? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so then item eight, Subcommittee and Project Reports, and Warren signed. Matt?
Uh, yes. So we did have our first Special Education Subcommittee meeting last week, or the, last week, last Wednesday. The focus was largely on talking about goals for the year in advance of our strategy session on October 5th. And we'll talk more about it as a, as a group, obviously, but the focus really will be on taking a look at how we're doing against the plan for the sped plan, improvement plan. And we'll hope to get back together in six weeks, four to six weeks or so to, to review that, review progress. CPAC has their social, or a first social with the board this Wednesday, September 25th, at Scarlet Oak Tavern. And Hef has, the spelling bee is coming up, October 27th. Registration for that opens up next week, September 30th.
Excellent. You dressing up as the bee this year?
Evidently, yep. I'm the third grade moderator, so very excited about that. One of my favorite events of the year, for sure.
It is, it's right.
Yep.
Do you inherit the bee suit?
Evidently, I think that is part of the, part of the deal, really, so, yeah.
That was the job description.
It does, it does.
I'm born in the bee suit. Gosh. Tim?
The, the Educational Program and Subcommittee meeting that I promised our last school committee was actually postponed so that we could really dig into the beginning of the year data. So if anyone loves the MTSS presentations that we do during the full school committee meeting and wants to dig deeper and maybe have more of an open conversation about it and how that data is presented, that would be a great. We're also going to look at the portrait of a graduate and set some goals for the committee for the year. So that's going to be October 2nd at 4:30 in the school committee conference room.
Thank you.
School department conference room.
Celebrary negotiations met on September 16th. Due to prepare for some upcoming collective bargaining and also to discuss our goals, which we'll also discuss at our next meeting on October 3rd, we'll also be beginning collective bargaining with cafeteria managers and technicians.
Thanks. Ally?
Policy is meeting on the first, and we will talk about our goals for the year at that Eden. And AJ had a board meeting last week.
Great. Jen?
There are warrants in the packet.
And then I, part of the wellness committee at the school, and they, there are two committee, community parents, or one parent, one former parent of Hingham High School graduates, who are putting on the Yale Science of Wellbeing class for 20 students who have volunteered to do that. That starts this Wednesday. It's an eight-week program. So I think we'll learn more about that later in the year as they'll come and talk to us about it. And that was it. All right, so item nine. We do have an item nine, which is other items that may not be reasonably known within 48 hours in advance of the meeting. So I'll let Katie discuss this.
Yes, so I had a late-breaking request from Jim Quattramony. Some students were invited to participate in an invitational cross-country meet just over the border in Warwick, Rhode Island. It's an event that they have done before, and so that is on September 28th. And there, there will be 40 students, 42 students attending.
Any questions? Okay.
I will make a motion to approve the cross-country, invitational cross-country meet for the date of September 28th, 2024.
Hold on a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, aye. Any opposed? No. Okay. All right. So we are at item 10, which is to adjourn to executive session, not to, uh, return to open session. Meeting. Anyone make a motion?
I will make a motion to adjourn to executive session, not to return to open session pursuant to Mass General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21A3, for the purposes of to approve minutes from the executive session held on September 9th, 2024. As an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining position of the public body, and the Chair so declares.
I so declare.
To discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation. If an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigation position of the public body, and the Chair so declares.
I so declare. Do we have a second?
Hold on a second.
All those in favor, Matt?
Aye.
Tim?
Aye.
Carrie?
Aye.
Ally?
Aye.
Jen?
Aye.
And I'm an a as well. All right, we're adjourned. Thank you.